York School District One. For order, do I have a motion for executive session for certified personnel in legal matters?
Salute for adoption.
Have a motion by Ms. Johnson, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Faulkner. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. We'll now go into executive session. Call this meeting to order for the general session of York School District One. We will now have our invocation by Reverend Eddie Brown, St. John's Baptist Church. Reverend Brown?
Dear Heavenly Father, we are grateful that you have allowed us to be here on this day. We thank you, Lord God, for our teachers and our administrators on this day. Father, for their dedication and care, we give thanks in guiding our children on their educational way. For teachers who inspire, that goes the extra mile, patiently nourishing our children with loving smile. We thank you, Lord, for wisdom and grace blessing them abundantly in every place. For their tireless effort to help them grow and to unpack their lives that they might know. We are grateful, Lord, for their tireless work that they do and continue to bless and take care of them and watch over them. Continue to bless those out throughout the year. Keep your angelic camp around them and your loving hand around them. May you bless them with abundant grace, with thanksgiving in hearts, with expression of love. In Jesus' name, we continue to pray, oh God, for our bus drivers, oh Father God. We thank you, God, for our administrators and all of those who pray and pour their part in education our children. Lord, just continue to bless them and keep them, oh Father God. Guide them and let them be about doing what you have called them out to do. Continue to keep them in your perfect will that everything they do and say, the work that you allow them to do, will be a blessing unto you. We ask all of these things in Jesus' name and for Christ's sake, we pray, amen, amen, and amen.
We'll now have a pledge of allegiance led by Sophia Ramsey, student from Hunter Street Elementary School. If you're able, if you could please stand.
A allegiance purified by the United States of America into the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Let the record reflect, we do have a call with all members present at this time. Would you have confirmation, notice the media? Is there any members of the media present at this evening? No members appear to be present. There was no one here to speak for the public call. That being stated, we'll move into consent agenda. We have a motion for approval on the consent agenda.
Some move for adoption of the consent agenda.
Motion by Ms. Johnson, you have a second. Second by Anderson, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose no. Motion carries. We'll now move to our recognitions. Sorry, I skipped. So if we could have for swearing in of new trustee, Judge Lee Alfred come forward with Ms. Diane Howell for seat five. And Ms. Howell, if you have any family members that would like to join you during swearing in, they can also come up to the left. Thank you, Judge Alfred. Ms. Howell, glad to have you back. For those of you who don't know, Ms. Howell was on the board for two terms and that was as a at-large member. She's now representing her seat five, is she sitting her seat five now? So glad to have her back and thank you.
Ms. Howell, you can turn your.
So next we'll have our school spotlight for Hunter Street Elementary School, Ms. Jane Wallace-Prinze.
Come on, come on, there you go. Chairman Revels, members of the board, Superintendent Cox, thank you so much for inviting us here to Spotlight Hunter Street. I brought along my entourage back here because these are the ladies that are doing the work. I'm just in the driver's seat, sitting back, watching it all happen, creating the atmosphere. So our spotlight today, we have chosen the collaboration piece out of the student-centered learning framework. I have a hard time saying that, I have to slow down. But you know, we as educators, we love to talk, but we need to make sure that that talk has purpose. And so that's what we've been focusing on so far this year. And I have with me three of my teachers, see where you are. Jennifer Mauer teaches fourth grade language arts. Abby Elliott teaches fourth grade math, science, and social studies. And then Samantha McCall teaches kindergarten. So we thought we would give you a view of what collaboration looks like on either end of the scale at Hunter Street. We discovered very quickly when we were talking about collaboration, we sort of knew what that looked like with adults. But what does it look like with a kindergartner? And how, what are the skills that we need to bring forward and teach them so that they are able to collaborate within the classroom? So I'm going to be quiet and let you see what that looks like. And I forgot about Lindsey Lawson, the assistant principal, right here in my blind spot, sorry about that. But again, we're going to let you see how that looks at Hunter Street and the work that we began the very first day of school.
I've seen some teachers just hit the ground with it. First day, I had some classes all in the starting to teach these skills. That's one of the things that came out that day, the teachers meeting was, okay, our kids don't know how to collaborate. So what are they supposed to do?
We have a big focus on collaboration among staff this year, but also encouraging it for our students. So to begin the year, Ms. Lawson kind of gave us a chat about what does collaboration look like at the level we're at. So being kindergarten, we took a way back. And one of our biggest struggles or encounters that we come across is a lot of our students, even the upper grades, don't know how to have a conversation. They don't know how to introduce themselves, they don't know how to answer somebody a question, they don't know how to respond to a question. And so as a team, like current team, it's kind of looking at what does, what do they need to understand in order to have a conversation? And concern all of introducing themselves. So we're just all about meeting right now and anything is perfect. So we learn how to use ourselves really coming through. We did one basic interview session. And just getting them talking back. First of all, I had them investigate, Ms. McCall was just trying to react to the starters first and got them some notes. We were doing a lot of strong people first time. And then we also started modeling, we were showing them a lot of talking or internet playing, almost trying to talk. And they picked one a lot of that. And then we did a little activity, we were called musical partners. So they have music playing, they're walking around the room, the music stops, they had five hundred person and sit down. And then that was their goal, introduce themselves, and then they had a question for a spark. The first time we had talked about other class, they talked about eyes on each other, our things are pointing to each other, but nobody had said anything about listening. So we got to add that to our part and importance of not only do I have to believe you, but also kind of listen to what you're saying.
So the first of the school, I tried to play collaboration activities for our students to create a team. Starting from special Monday, we're following through Friday. And each day that we collaborated, I tried to make the activity more challenging each day. And I also tried to put up with distracting these students, trying to implement, put them together so that they were more than equal. So after we do the first activity, they went together, we came back the other day too. Then I tried to get them brainstorm different strategies that they use, but then there's more to make towards still working to create our collaboration. So it comes about teamwork, communication, meaningful acting questions, something like that. And then so I asked them to take their own device, they know it's a great collaboration tool, and use it each day in their practice. So then, I think it was Wednesday or Thursday, we tried the activity called, where they like to take their index fingers straight out, they have to arm it out. They have to raise some little finger to the back of the head. And we were not that day, we had all three of us, we were working on collaboration plates. And so I had to try to, and they couldn't come with us, and we got too, too much. And then when they pull this, it's an entire collaboration tool. So then I, I, I was, some of them, those who get away with it, I didn't see how well helps. Everybody can do the passive calling, a lot of collaboration. So when I look back now, I'm like, I'm like, I'm like, I'm like, women are like, they're playing, they're helping others. Looking at how well he offered, but instead of how long he made it, just works the other on his own task. But maybe he could stand and he played, okay, really well, it was well again. But we're like, there's something, like, they'll make the backboard for that. It was easy to hear, to help each other, having purchased all the, got to see kind of how they, why they were before they could give them. And got to kind of have them there. And then having time to put on different stuff for this whole. And then later on, maybe do something very slow and they have experience, kind of move on to something different. And then I come back, maybe with somebody different, say, there are these things already, and then apply to, or whatever next, I could be doing a lot of, or maybe even doing a lot of, yeah. So they had to take very similar activities, what they work with somebody new and then say, say they've already done, applied to. Their acts were collaborative, collaborative, so they can hear, make a call, trying to be successful. So sometimes starting over here, kind of how they've always taken us, what matters, what will be, good activities, please, work together, please, and like, they also socially sound like social skills. Or making friends, like, whatever they need here, or they do, and they use to help schools during time, so that those social skills could also open the bathroom, really, their co-liking. And our goal is, as we travel throughout this year, but even more so, to develop, right? That partnerships turns into two or three people, if there are two people, five people, turns into six or seven, until they can collaborate as a couple in the entire class.
As you can see this face, I am a proud mama. These three took off, I didn't tell them to do that, they took off with what we had talked about. And we are working hard. That word collaboration shows up in everything, I'm sure they're probably tired of hearing it by now. But we're trying to put that into everything we do so that we work together to get there. And I know that this group is probably very familiar with collaboration. So I'm making my staff earn these, but I think you've probably already earned them. This is a, what am I trying to say, a pen, to go on the lanyard. It is called a cool collaborator. So by the end of the year, as we process through all the work that we're going to do, they will be able to use or earn the cool collaborator. But I'm going to share one of those with each of you. We know that you collaborate together, right? And we'd be glad to, these ladies would be glad to address any questions that you might have for us.
Do I have any questions?
I'll make a quick comment or statement. I couldn't help but jot down a couple of notes, you know, as the presentation was going on. I think about as kids enter into work life, you know, somewhere down the road, they get into their career and all of the things that we deal with from a corporate standpoint. And I promise you, a lot of the things that you're dealing with, we're still dealing with thirty, fifty-year-old engineers and comforters. So active listening, teamwork, so many of the problems that we deal with, that we solve from a business standpoint, it's all about communication and understanding. Trying to have people to be able to be active in the moment and be able to listen to what questions are telling us. So it's just interesting to me to see you've got four-year-old, five-year-old kindergarteners, you know, all the way up to people my age, still trying to be working on some stuff. So congratulations on the work that you're doing.
I would definitely have to say today, the collaboration piece definitely went over into the social aspect. Well, actually, yesterday, we had two girls at recess who had a confrontation with one another. And so I encouraged them to use their voice and I mediated or kind of stood back and watched them communicate with each other and solved their problem. And after one communicated with the other, it was total misunderstanding. So it's working in all aspects.
Do you have any questions or comments? Thank you all.
Thank you.
Great presentation. We'll now move to student and staff recognitions, recognition, I can't talk either. Ms. Lisa Spangler, coordinator of special projects. And Ms. Betty Johnson, assistant.
Tonight, we get to recognize people that we don't normally get to recognize, and that's our board members. Congratulations to the following board members who reached a new level in the South Carolina School Boards Association Boardsmanship Institute. Mr. McSwain, if you'll come forward, he reached level one. And Mr. Childers, if you'll come forward. Mr. Childers reached level three. Established in nineteen eighty-two, the South Carolina School Boards Association Boardsmanship Institute offers a year-round training curriculum focused on leadership skills for board members on state and national educational issues. Congratulations, gentlemen. Next, I'll ask Ms. Rebecca Dover, who's the principal at Hickory Grove Sharon, to come forward. And I think we have the teacher, Deanna Ferry, if she'll come forward as well. Tonight, we are recognizing Caspian Russ. Caspian, will you come forward? All right. Caspian scored the highest obtainable score on the SC Ready Assessment during the spring of twenty twenty-three. I said the highest for grade three math.
That is, that is pretty crazy. But as you can see, I, I can't help but smile when I talk about all of our programs. But as you can tell from our video, uh, the CDL component of, of our line worker program is a tremendous added benefit to the program for, uh, from last year moving forward. It sets, it sets students apart. It sets them up for success after, for life after high school. And it is a four thousand to even, even upwards of five thousand dollar value that students or their prospective employers would have to, to foot the bill for, um, if they didn't have it. But they leave high school with a CDL in hand, uh, making them more marketable to employers, um, as they apply for jobs and it gives them a competitive advantage in the field. And as he pointed out, it's icing on the cake for an already incredible program, um, it is icing on the cake. This CDL component fits perfectly into our mission of career readiness, uh, for all students at FDJ. What better, better industry credential than a CDL in hand, as I mentioned, uh, for a future line worker? As a side note, we also plan to offer OSHA ten, uh, which many of you know is a very valuable credential in way, as well, that never expires, I learned today. Uh, so I'm still, still learning after six years in this role. Uh, and a, and a final benefit, um, that was pointed out by our instructor is that our students, when they have this in hand, they'll be able to give back to their community. They can drive for field trips, they can drive for athletic teams, um, and, and I know some of y'all will enjoy that in the back, yeah, yeah. That's right, that's right. So we're, we got a new crop of those coming for you. All right, so just to give you a snapshot of our spring students, we have three students with their full CDL, uh, four students with permits in hand and two students currently in the permitting process. And to give you some background on that, um, eighteen is kind of the magic number for, for age for a CDL. I've learned so much about this process, y'all. It's amazing. So students can complete the coursework and their physical and their drug tests prior to turning eighteen. And once they turn eighteen, they can go to the DMV to test, to test for their permit, which is four, four different tests, general knowledge, air brakes, passenger vehicle and school bus. And they must take and pass all before their permit can be issued. I am told that it is extremely rare for any person, young or old, to go and take and pass all four and anyone sitting on the first, first go around. For that reason, it takes multiple trips to the DMV for most folks to get the permit, which brings me to the most impressive thing, uh, of this, this whole thing for me is that our state department instructor goes with them to every visit to the DMV, one-on-one, sits with them, coaches them through it. I mean, do y'all want to go sit at the DMV four different times? Times twelve kids? So, so that is impressive, the, uh, the dedication to that. So as I mentioned, they, uh, they are, once they have the permit in hand, they begin the behind the wheel training with our local York and Clover instructors, um, and then they can test for their full, full license. So our kind of next steps, um, so this year, in order to better accommodate students turning eighteen throughout the school year, we started offering the coursework, work component of the process on Fridays during class time as opposed to after York Tech classes ended in May last year. So our utility line worker classes don't meet on Fridays, so we decided to capitalize on that time and we brought them back in on Friday, so they're, they're doing the coursework component during class time on Fridays now. Uh, this gives us more of a staggered start for our twelve line worker students and we're not packing everything into the month of May and into the summer. So classwork began last week, last Friday, September the eighth, and will continue throughout the fall semester. And once students complete the coursework and turn eighteen, again, the process will repeat itself and they'll continue to go to the DMV with, with, uh, with our students this year to get their permits, um, and begin the on the, on behind the wheel training once that's all completed. Uh, depending upon the availability of instructors, we also want to expand this program. Uh, we would like to include programs such as firefighting, welding, automotive, uh, ROTC a- and others. So on behalf of the entire staff of FDJ, we want to thank you guys for encouraging career readiness and supporting us in that mission that, that we, we take so seriously every single day. Thank you. Any questions for us?
Questions, comments? I just want to say, you know, going to the School Board Association meetings, even at the law conference, this last one, words kind of getting out, which I think is great that other districts know, um, that's very important, all across the state, so thank you for that.
We don't tell our story, somebody else will, so. So that is our, that is our goal.
I think it's great for any student in the district, so I'm glad that, you may have any other questions or comments?
CDL twelve students.
Yes, sir.
Is there a seat limit for that program?
Yes, there is a twelve, it is capped at twelve, and we share that program with Clover. So depending upon interest levels and things of that nature, um, we, it is capped at twelve for safety. So we had to have an application process, starting last year, we, we did an application for students, um, just kind of gauging interest of, you know, do they want to do this just because it looks cool or is this a career path? Uh, so, and, and a lot of it depends on, you know, the, the number of seats Clover needs as well. Uh, this year, we have the majority of the seats, so that's, that's a good thing, so.
You've never heard him talking about big money in videos.
We got you.
Yeah, we got you, we got you.
We have been in discussions with York Tech about feasibility of scaling to the program and adding another twelve, if you can find another line worker instructor, but believe it or not, they're not holding out truths because they do so much, being a line worker, wanting to come and teach it physically.
They, they are unicorns, as we've been told, so, and we've, and we've learned, so.
Thank you very much.
Yep, you bet.
Thank you.
Uh, next we'll have the Summer Fest report by Kevin Queen, Director of Transportation. Chris Queen.
Good evening Superintendent Cox and Chairman Childers and School Board members. York School District One had the privilege of partnering, uh, with the City of York for Summer Fest twenty twenty-three. We had over a hundred and fifteen York Comprehensive High School student volunteers who served, including, uh, members from our course, our ROTC, athletics clubs and other individual members of the senior class. York School District One was a silver sponsor, uh, this year, which allowed us a tent on Main Street, uh, where we had thirty-one employees, uh, who distributed booklets throughout the day. The booklets highlight our schools, uh, our departments and, and the many programs that we offer. We also gave out over three thousand fans, which were distributed to the community that, uh, shared our district logo and also our social media sites. And of course, with the heat, those, those fans were, were gone quickly and, uh, a- and good. The partnership allowed, uh, the partnership allowed our school district to provide, uh, again, this year, a, a, a school bus shuttle from York Middle School and from York Comprehensive High School. Uh, we transported that day five hundred and sixty-seven folks, uh, back and forth, um, from downtown back to the middle school and high school. As I mentioned earlier, we, uh, were a silver sponsor, so due to that, the district was able, uh, to showcase, uh, banners, uh, with our logo on it. Uh, one banner was placed at the Kids Zone, uh, the other, uh, was placed at the, uh, shuttle sites, uh, where people could recognize that we were offering that and know, know where to go. And if you, uh, if you attended Summer Fest, you can relate to these pictures. Uh, it was indeed hot, um, but I know that I speak for all of us when I, I say that we, um, truly appreciate the privilege to partner with the City of York, uh, as we serve our community and represent our school district. I also must tell you that we, um, have learned that from our participation in Summer Fest, we had an applicant for a school bus driver, uh, who we've now recommended to hire. Uh, and also, I learned today that Ms. Bowlin, and I'm gonna let her share the good news if, if you would.
Our math teacher that's on the agenda tonight, um, that's been recommended for middle school math, is actually a higher that we got from Summer Fest also. He stopped to see us and like Green started a conversation with him and had to be swerved in and, so I think, uh, if you are free tonight, he'll be at the middle school, so very excited about that.
So a lot of, absolutely, a lot, a lot of benefits from participating and, and being a partner with the City of York at Summer Fest, but those were two, two big highlights as well. So any questions about Summer Fest that I can answer for you?
I don't have a question, but I do have a comment. I had the opportunity to visit the stand, the tent, and you guys were really doing a great job. You were enthused and a lot of energy for all of that hot heat that was out there. So I was really proud to be a part. My granddaughter said, "Well, Mom, you know those people?" Yes, I do, and I'm proud of them too. So I was really proud of the work that you were doing. I saw you, uh, Dr. Green talking, I, I, I saw the pitch that was given, but it was, it was very pleasing to see you in action. I was real proud.
Thank you.
Next up, we have athletic update, Mr. Chad Harper, Director of Student Services, Coach Joey Moore, York Comprehensive High School Athletic Director, Coach Paula Blackwell, York Middle School Athletic Director.
Well, good evening, Chairman Childers, Superintendent Cox and Board of Trustees. Tonight's my pleasure to give you an update on our school athletic programs. Uh, joining me tonight is Mr. Joey Moore and our high school athletic director and Paula Blackwell, our middle school athletic director. Uh, Mrs. Blackwell is going to start off, uh, with a review of our middle school program.
Okay, good evening. The picture, as you can tell, I know everybody sees this picture, but all three of those young ladies placed, the one was just a little sad that she didn't win first, so. She's okay, but, um, I'll start with our numbers, football, seventh and eighth grade. Now, this is last year's numbers, but we maintained, I checked today, and I think we're at ninety-nine this year, uh, football. Uh, volleyball, this is last year's twenty-four, this year we're at twenty-six. Of course, wrestling, we won't know yet, uh, last year's forty-two. Cheerleading, uh, was twelve last year, we've grown this year, we're at twenty. And of course, boys basketball, and it says seventh and eighth, those are two separate teams though, you know, it's twenty-five total. Girls basketball, same, seventh and eighth, two separate, twenty-two young ladies. Baseball, we have eighteen. Softball was thirteen. Boys and girls track, as you can see, the army of sixty-seven and it's usually sixty-seven. Um, but, yeah, we really try to include as many students as we can, get them to try, just try things, you know, you may not want to do it after one year, or maybe you'll do it a few years and not do it in high school, but just try to, you know, throw it out there to them. But Ms. Valerino does a great job, Mr. Cunningham, Ms. Mondo kind of jumping in and helping and encouraging athletics and trying to get everybody involved. Any questions, middle school? Welcome back, Ms. Howell.
Uh, for the high school, uh, you see these numbers again, last year, uh, for football, you had three levels of teams there, ninth grade JV varsity, about a hundred and fifty-two. It's about, we're a little bit up, up this year, a little more than that. Cross country, twenty-eights, about normal. Girls golf, six, I think we have five out this year. Girls tennis, sixteen, we're up to about twenty-two, I think, on this year's team. Uh, volleyball, two squads there with twenty-four, that's normal, uh, and swimming, we got twenty-six this year. Competitive cheer, forty-five is about, uh, what we run on there as well. So in the fall, about, as you see, close to three hundred kids participating. Uh, the winter sports for us, basketball and wrestling, you see the breakdown there, JV team for boys was a little small there. Uh, this year we'll have the ninth grade team and the JV boys team and the boys varsity team, so our numbers for, uh, all indications of the preseason and the off-season work, all indications we'll have, those numbers will be up, uh, this year for basketball for boys. Girls, uh, fourteen on the varsity, uh, excuse me, fourteen JV and twelve on the varsity, that's about the norm. And then wrestling, thirty-eight, uh, brand new wrestling coach just got on board last week, uh, we'll see what interest in wrestling is, if it's gonna go up or down, you never know with the coaching change sometimes, but thirty-eight was a good number. In the springtime, cross country, that's from the other slide, that's actually in the fall, we covered that one. Boys golf, about six, we, we usually run six or seven kids, boys on the golf team. Uh, baseball, thirty with two teams there, it's fifteen apiece. Uh, you see the soccer numbers for boys, forty-two, girls twenty-four. Again, new girl soccer coach, seems to be a lot of new interest in soccer during the summer workouts and right now during our open season workouts, um, we may surpass that number for girls this year, hopefully we do. Softball, twenty-eight for two teams is about normal. Boys tennis, we, that was a little low last year, hopefully be pushing maybe up to close to twenty this year in the spring. And then track and fields, everybody's favorite, you see those numbers are always high. Um, you know, there's fifteen different events or something for somebody to do in track and field, so about ninety kids last year, so total of six hundred kids, uh, that's, you know, a little less than half our student body involved in something athletically, we think that's pretty strong.
And speaking about teams, uh, an interest, uh, we talked about this last year, that boys volleyball was something that was, uh, uh, something we may add in the future. There was an interest poll that was conducted this past spring with about fifteen students indicated that they were interested, uh, and we're looking at another poll, uh, to explore that possibility coming up this year and with the hopes of possibly adding volleyball, uh, in the fall. Uh, and of course, new to our team, uh, probably one of the hardest jobs and probably one of the most rewarding jobs is coaching. Uh, I did it for many years and it's wonderful and we're so happy to have these new people on bo- on board. Our new varsity coaches for twenty-three, twenty-four, Courtney Furlo, Furlo, volleyball, Thomas Douglas, uh, boys basketball, Daniel Hagan, girls soccer, Anthony McFadden, cross country, Matt Glean's gonna be our girls golf, and then Casey Thomason, competitive cheer, and then Kip Charles is our new wrestling coach.
Uh, as far as what's on the horizon, um, right around the corner at the forty-five day count, soon as we finish this nine weeks, every school in the state has to report their numbers, uh, because it's realigned a year. Of course, that means the high school league will take those numbers once they're certified and then they'll have the, the difficult task of breaking all the high schools into classifications and then into regions. Uh, I don't envy that task. We all complain about it every year when it's finished, but nobody wants to do it, uh, because it is a tremendous struggle if you think geographically, how are you gonna put these three A, four A, five A schools close enough to travel and get even numbers? And somebody always ends up disappointed. From all indications that I've looked at and talking to other ADs and other schools, I think we're safe to remain as a four A school. Uh, it's not a hundred percent guaranteed, but, uh, our numbers have not shown a tremendous jump from two years ago, um, when the realignment was done. So anticipate us again being in the four A classification. However, some of the schools we play now in four A in our region, I anticipate them probably going up. You know, that, that Catawba Ridge area, Indian Land area, very likely they could go to five A and then that's gonna push our region, we're gonna lose two teams and unfortunately the only way you can find them is probably going south to Columbia, which increases our travel again, traveling down there to play region games in the middle of the week. But that's, that's what you get. So that's what's, what's coming up.
Unless we have to, I think that's it. Do you have any questions for us?
Good messages, comments? I just thank you, Mr. Blackwell, thank Chris Blackwell, thank you.
Yeah, I want to thank both these folks for the long hours. This is one of the few nights they get off and we appreciate you being here and all the hours that you put forth and all your coaches and thank you for this.
I would say Chris Blackwell, Coach Blackwell, I mean, y'all see me at some of the games, I sure, you know, love the women, you know, athletics, y'all know the year tomorrow, so it always has been, but not only athletics, all of the extracurricular activities that our students do are important, so those are some really big numbers for our district outside, so I know it's a lot of work on all of y'all's part and staff, and we do very appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Next up, Office of Curriculum, uh, Ms. Alyssa, well, I have a tongue tie to it, Ms. Alyssa Cox, Director of Secondary Programs, April Olmer, Director of Elementary and Gifted Programs.
Good evening, it is just me tonight?
I totally missed that, sorry.
No, it's perfectly okay. Um, so good evening Chairman Childers, members of the board, Superintendent Cox. I am delighted to be able to share with you tonight an update on our collaboration days for this school year. We do have two of those on our school calendar. Our first one is coming up next week on September the twentieth, and our second one will be on Wednesday, November the eighth. As we are continuing our work towards becoming a learning organization and building capacity and leadership at every level of our organization, all of the plans for professional collaboration days for this school year have been planned at the school level by our leadership teams. As principals and school admin teams prepare for collaboration days, each is ensuring that professional development and learning opportunities support our strategic change agenda and they are focused on one or more of the strategies that are included within our goals of the strategic change agenda. Principals and their school administrative teams are also planning collaborative day learning opportunities in an effort to support our York School District One Student Center Teaching and Learning Framework, specifically the instructional and domain area that each principal has already chosen and shared with their school faculty on their focus and goal for this school year. Our elementary schools have planned the following sessions. We will have approximately eighty of our elementary staff members, uh, participating in their letters training. Um, our elementary principals and teams have planned sessions with our Instructional Technology Integration Specialist to be able to support our teachers with two of our instructional tools, which are Exact Path and Mastery Connect. And then schools that are focusing on collaborative practices and, um, designing small group sessions will have sessions within their buildings to focus on those two aspects of our teaching and learning framework. At the secondary level, school principals and teams have planned a mini-conference that will be focused on teachers facilitating and sharing effective instructional strategies and practices. Teachers will have a choice to attend two of the session offerings and be provided time to collaborate with peers based on the information shared in these sessions. Our technology center has planned to begin exploring connections between current subjects and program performance skills and competency indicators. This work will be facilitated by Dr. Green and Ms. Shannon Clinton. We are very thankful for the board's support of the time provided for our administrators, teachers and staff to collaborate around teaching and learning strategies focused on the work of our strategic change agenda and more importantly, our students. So thank you. If you have any questions about collaboration day, I will try to answer them.
Any questions, comments?
I, I would like to say publicly to the board, thank you for allowing this time built in with the school calendar. We all know that the teachers are where the real work occurs and we're able to give them dedicated time set aside to work and to collaborate with one another so that we're not taking it all. It is truly beneficial, so we appreciate y'all's continued support of allowing this professional.
Whatever you say so, I'm gonna, I'm gonna remain up here for one more time. Maybe, I'm still gonna stay, I'll just wait. Okay. Now I'm going to provide you with our GT update. Um, so I've been doing this, this makes my third time on my update, so we're gonna kind of talk numbers today, but I wanted to begin by just reminding you of our GT goal within our district, and that is to maximize the potential of gifted and talented students by providing them with programs and services that match their unique characteristics and needs. And then, just a reminder, this is a lot on the slide, but in our district, for students to qualify for GT or what we call merit within our district, um, if they rank in the ninety-sixth national percentile, um, for their composite aptitude test, then they are an automatic qualifier. Okay? And that would have to be on their COGAT or on their NAGLIER, which we began that again, we put that in last year. If they receive credit for two of the three dimensions, then they're eligible for placement. So dimension B would be our MAP scores, our SC Ready and our Iowa testing. And then dimension C is when we give them a performance task. Also, whenever you get up into sixth grade and above, that dimension C also becomes a gray point average of three point seven five on their core subjects. When I was with you in the spring, we talked about our performance task assessment and our scores coming back, so wanted to update everybody on that. And newly qualified for that testing, we had thirty-one second graders and seventy-eight third through eighth graders. And then this slide is me trying to show you how we are increasing our GT students in our district. So last August, when I was with you, we had five hundred forty-three. Today, six hundred eighty-two. So we have increased by a hundred thirty-nine more students with what we're doing in our district. And testing season is upon us again, so that begins in October and we are now starting the referral process, so parents can refer and schools can refer. So all of our second graders are gonna be tested and then third through sixth grade students who are referred either by their school or by their, uh, parent will be tested beginning in October. Then, we also have artistically talented students, and so we work with Winthrop University with their Starts Summer Program, that's for students in grades six through eight. Um, this past summer, it was, uh, June the fifth through June the twenty-third, those students go and they do art, to voice, instrument, dance and theater. This past summer, we had forty-five students participate in that program and thirty-three of those students are automatically eligible to participate again this summer. And then, starting in November, we're gonna begin auditions to fill those remaining spaces that we have available for that program. Anybody have any questions? I will try my best to answer them or I'll call on my counterparts. Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions, comments?
Okay, thank you.
May I have assistance, Superintendent for Finance and Operations, Ms. Amy Haber? I missed that too.
Good evening.
Sorry, Mr. Blackwell.
That's okay. How are y'all doing, see? Hope everybody's good. I won't take up much of your time, we're gonna do a little bit of compliance stuff here, uh, we're gonna talk about E-Rate and the Children's Internet Protection Act. We'll start off with a little bit of information about what E-Rate is. E-Rate is a federally funded monies for schools, public and private, and, uh, libraries to receive money to assist them with their data connections, internet connections, anything we're gonna talk to the internet. This is ran by the FCC and oversaw by the USAC, um, Commission, sorry, I'll go back to that, and it allows us to do quite a bit for a very reduced rate, and I'll go through that in just a minute. E-Rate is split into two categories, uh, we have category one, you can think of that as internet service, anything that goes outside of the building is considered category one data. Uh, category two is all our internal connections. Category one is actually for us handled at the state level, so we really don't have to involve ourself in that, we just pay our percentage and move on. Category two, we have to do a lot more investigative and a lot more paperwork to get those fundings to come through. Category one is unfortunately helped by the state. Uh, when we talk funding, funding is based off of National School Lunch Program. Uh, if you'll see the highlighted line there in yellow, we fall in that seven, the fifty to seventy-four percent. It didn't go much further than the original, but there's two lines in here that we have to abide by. You'll see up at the very top, line one, uh, we must in internet security policies for monitoring of online activities for minors. Uh, we actually do that for everyone in the district because it's a whole lot easier now. Um, step two was educating our children on how to engage online. Social media, cyber bullying, uh, hacking, things like that. Uh, that was fairly easy because we just wrote up a document that is now in our handbook and it's a form that parents need to sign every year as the children come in. So the education portion was very, uh, cut and dry. The second part of it takes a little bit more on the backend, right? Uh, it's a little more work on my end. Um, but we use four separate systems to do this compliance. Uh, we use a Palo Alto firewall, which allows us to block traffic internal and outbound. Um, it does some web filtering. Uh, we use LineWise, which does our heavy lifting web filtering. This piece of software allows us to, now that we're one-to-one and children take their devices home, we can filter them at home through this device. Uh, so they're getting the same filtering as they do when they walk in our buildings. Uh, so parents don't have to worry about them going to those malicious sites when they're at home. Um, LineWise is great. If you look down at the very bottom, it ties directly into Gaggle. Gaggle is a phenomenal and, uh, Mr. Carper uses it quite often. Um, it monitors everything the children do online. That includes writing a word document, anything that has something in it, they are looking at it. Um, and it ties directly into LineWise, which is allows us to see what our students are searching on the internet. So if you're seeing some malicious things coming from a child over and over, self-harm, those type things, we can reach out to those students and try to engage them before something actually happens, uh, which is a really nice feature. Uh, the last piece of equipment we use is actually a state-funded product. It's all software-driven, lives in the cloud and we use this to block things. There are certain things in the world that we can't block because they're wrapped in a encrypted message, right? So we have to rely on something external to here to just block the traffic totally. And we use that Cisco umbrella product that is paid for by the state. That makes us one hundred percent compliant with SIPA and we are still able to get our funding for E-Rate so we can afford to continue to do the cool things with the wireless and all of our networking. Any questions for me on SIPA? Uh, E-Rate, I just told you everything I know about those two, so if you ask me anything else, I don't know anything. Uh, anything about technology?
Any other questions or comments? Just on technology side, really looks good. And likes to have monitors, so that's appreciated for sure.
Good. And we got it working about three minutes before you walk it in.
But it is working.
That's right.
That's all that matters.
That's what technology does.
And we do appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am. Well, we appreciate y'all more than that. Thank you. Thank y'all.
Good evening, board members. Um, my first item is an action item regarding unused sick leave. Um, per policy, G C C, G D C, uh, the district may compensate employees for unused leave days that are excess of the ninety days cumulative leave balance as of June thirtieth. Um, so as a part of our twenty-three, twenty-four budget process, the board voted to compensate our employees with days over ninety at a fourth of their daily rate. You can see we have sixty employees who had, um, sick leave in excess of the ninety days at June thirtieth. We'll compensate those employees in December of this year and you can see the total cost is a little over forty-one thousand dollars and so I asked for your approval.
Is there a motion, uh, as administration recommends compensation of employees? Any comments?
Motion by Ms. Johnson. Any discussion? All those favor say aye. I oppose no. Motion through.
Thank you. The next is policy G C, G C C A C, G D C C, pay parental leave and I ask for your approval for first reading.
Is there a motion as administration recommends approval for first reading? Ask for your approval.
Some would.
Motion by Ms. Johnson. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Faulkner. Any discussion? All those favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Motion through.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Haber. Now I'm turning over to Office of Human Resources, Ms. Jennifer Colley.
Good evening. I have three action items and one information item for you tonight. The first action item is for some new classified positions. These are two assistant positions that we're requesting, one at Jefferson Elementary and one at the high school. The one at Jefferson would be located in a multi-level two classroom to assist with some behavior, um, needs that are in that classroom. Um, just to give a little bit of information of what multi-level two is stated there, a student has to have more than two disabilities and the student cannot be accommodated in a special education program designed for one of those disabilities alone. It has to be to, um, for both of those disabilities that they are qualified for and it has to be within a self-contained classroom. And then the one at the high school is to help us with, um, currently we have a couple of teachers that are virtual special ed teachers that are coming through our hiring agency that we had to use this year and it's called Blaze Work Staffing. And this is to help us to, um, get the students located to where they need to be to get their virtual special ed program. A lot of times it's small group, it might be a, a one-on-one session and making sure the organization of getting children where they need to be and, you know, how high school kids can be and making sure we get them to where they need to be and, and online on their Chromebook with the teacher and making sure those things are taking place. So that is my action item for tonight, one of them.
Is there a motion as recommended by administration? Much to approve by Ms. Anderson. Second by Ms. Johnson. Any discussion on the matter? All those favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Motion through.
All right, and our second action item are certified resignations and release of contracts for twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
Do we have a motion? Motion by Ms. Faulkner, do we have a second? Second by Ms. Anderson. Any need for discussion? We can go to the executive session if you need any need for discussion. Seeing none, all those favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Motion through.
All right, and our next action item is certified recommendations for twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
Do we have a motion as recommended by administration?
Some would for the adoption of certified recommendation for twenty-three, twenty-four.
Motion by Ms. Johnson. Do we have a second?
Sorry.
Second by Mr. Anderson. Any discussion? Need to go to executive session? Any need for discussion? All those favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Motion through.
And our last item is just an information item there and it's a certified retirement.
Seeing this information, all of you know, vote. Any other items for Ms. Faulkner?
That's it.
Any other discussion for Ms. Faulkner?
Just one comment. Doing a great job.
Thank you, thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Faulkner. Now I'm turning over to Office of Superintendent, Ms. Jessica Colley.
First item that we have this evening is an update on the school law conference and I believe we wanted to do that.
Yes, ma'am. So, uh, attended the school law conference and a lot of different things, just an FYI, y'all could look at the agenda for us, but, uh, we did talk about I D E A, Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, went through that, pretty in-depth, it's pretty good, uh, general session there. A lot of the sessions talk about liabilities of board, parental bill of rights movements in different states, which we know is, is coming everywhere. Uh, what that really means, nobody really knows at this point, it's just, you know, a lot of information out there at the time. Uh, discipline, personnel, special education, uh, we did have a good one on constitutional law and that related to some of the student discipline. Uh, we did talk about, of course, the bill was passed last year, which most of us have talked about, you know, the bills that have been passed or in discussion, we've talked about, uh, a couple of those come back obviously to us as inocities and items of that sort. Um, South Carolina High School League discussion was going around, of course, with the charter schools and, you know, as Coach Moore mentioned, uh, we saw here, Coach Moore mentioned, uh, some of the dealings with everything going on in the state. That's part of it is who's, who's playing who, so that was a discussion item. Uh, last item, we did talk about on Sunday morning, part of it was Gavin's Law, which, uh, Representative Duffy, you know, that was named after his son for sex extortion, internet sex extortion. That is a requirement of, of the state now, so we will have to figure out moving forward what we do as a district, every, every school district, uh, in the state, we can participate in that and have a court of findings to be had. So that, that's a general overall, but it was a good conference. Um, it was pretty engaging, the folks that were there, it seemed like most people hung around on that session, so it was a, it was a good conference. I didn't know if anybody had any questions, just about the conference in general.
And may I add a quick question again, Ms. Webb?
Yes, ma'am.
We did learn last week, um, we've been waiting on guidance from the State Department on how we would educate students on that. Representative Duffy is going to create a video, I understand that has been completed now. The State Department of Education is drafting a letter. The video and the letter will be sent to families so that families can choose how they would like to have that conversation with their child so that we as a district aren't engaging with perhaps age inappropriate conversations with younger children. So we'll be providing the information to families for them to share with each other. The last item that I have for you this evening, um, are our upcoming dates. Before I get into the upcoming dates, if I may take the liberty to just say thank you to the crowd that we have this evening, those that remain with us, our Hunter Street Spotlight and a beautiful job on the pledge of allegiance, thank you precious, we did a outstanding job and we're very proud of you. Um, Hunter Street teachers, you did a phenomenal job and we are very proud of the collaboration that's being done there, Jane, thank you for that. On our upcoming dates, you can see that they are a little more dense than what we normally provide here. We made the decision just to give you some informational dates of events that are occurring at the schools in the event your calendar allows you to participate. Um, so I'd like to call your attention to September the thirtieth, we have the NAACP Freedom Fund banquet at the Union Baptist Church in Newport. Uh, if you're able to attend, please let Ms. Webb know so that she can secure those tickets. We as a district have postbox located with clover and if you're not able to attend, we want to make sure that we do offer those to some district staff members. We have the, um, Fall Concert coming up, the chorus on October the third. Uh, this is our first year of our new concert teacher, chorus teacher, Carrie, and she has shared with me today that her and her students are, um, building a portfolio to submit to the school board association to perhaps be chosen as entertainment at the February conference. So we'll see how that goes. I'm very proud of her stepping out there as the first year teacher with us and making that submission.
And just to note, sorry, this is, will be the first time students can actually come back again, so.
It will be a big video.
End of the live performances, so that'd be good.
So we're really excited that she's participating in that. October fifth and sixth are our parent-teacher conferences. October sixth is a half day for students. Um, we do have intercession week that begins the week of October the ninth. That ninth is our professional development day, uh, and I would encourage anyone who schedule allows for you to come and join us. We'll have two big professional development sessions going on. At the high school, we'll be having our Connected Ed Conference. That conference is put on by our teacher for, it's professional learning by teachers for teachers. We're really excited about that. Uh, simultaneously at the middle school, we will be hosting the media specialist conference for all of the whole English consortium. So lots of opportunities to be there. Uh, I'll hold on the other dates and we'll mention, mention them at a later time.
Just a question, so on the ninth, is, if we can attend some of that, can we go from the high school to the middle school?
Absolutely. Absolutely. And I'll get you a more detailed schedule of both, uh, including the offerings that we will be having at the high school, like the sessions. We're setting it up, if you would think of it like your law conference or your annual conference, it's set up conference format and teachers will choose where they would like to attend. There will be a couple of outside vendors, um, not selling things, but educational purposes. We brought in some financial advisors that'll be talking particularly to our first year teachers about the importance of saving your time, um, banking your days for perhaps unattended events in your life, a retirement setup early on, just education for our young folks that don't naturally think about that.
And I was just gonna mention for those who may be here or watching later, the October tenth meeting, we will be here if you know students want to, so.
That is true.
Just wanted to note that.
That is true. That's all I have for you this evening.
Is anybody else have any items? Period none. Is there a need for executive session? No apparent need for executive session. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Some would for adjournment.
Motion by Ms. Johnson, second by Ms. Anderson. All those favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. We are adjourned. Thanks to everyone for coming.